Polari School District School Board, Terry, can you please confirm we are in compliance with the open meeting law notification?
Yes, we are.
Please conduct roll call to verify a quorum.
Commissioner Clements. Commissioner Farrar. Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Lyons.
Here.
Commissioner Nordin.
Here.
Commissioner Zer.
Here.
Commissioner Becca.
We will now move to our pledge of allegiance. It is my pleasure to introduce Sofo Belay, a student from South Middle School. Sofo is a member of the National Junior Honor Society and plays basketball. He was an Odyssey of the mind and enjoyed collecting the pins at various competitions. He enjoys hanging out with his family and helping around the community through his church group. Would those who are willing and able, please stand and join Sofo in the pledge of allegiance.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Sofo.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sofo. Abby, would you please begin the organizational meeting?
I will. So all board members should have received paper ballots for voting purposes if we need them. So first I'll take a nomination for the office of the president. Commissioner Lyons.
I would nominate Commissioner Nordin.
I'll second. So we have Commissioner Nordin is nominated. Commissioner Nordin, do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Are there anyone else that would be nominated? The other nominations? The nominations are closed. So I'll take a motion to accept the nomination, which we did because we had Commissioner Lyons and Commissioners Zer. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right. Commissioner Nordin, you are officially the Eau Claire School District President for the next year. I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you. I thank you to my colleagues. I do need to serve in a way that is helpful to all of you. At this time, we'll move on to the election of vice presidents. Floor is open now for nominations for vice president.
I nominate Commissioner Becca.
I will second. I have Commissioner Becca is not here tonight. She is ill. I did confirm with her that she would accept leadership nominations as if any were given. So are there other nominations for the office of vice president? Any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor of... What's the actual motion even? This is, I haven't done this in person for two years. Is it elect or Becca as vice president?
Accept nomination.
To accept the nomination? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye and opposed. Then Dr. Becca will you on as our vice president. Next is the election of the clerk governance officer. At this time, I would hear nominations for clerk governance officer. That's what I am. Go ahead, Commissioner Lyons.
I would nominate Commissioner Johnson.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Johnson, you have been nominated as the clerk governance officer. Do you accept the nomination?
I accept.
All right. Are there other nominations for clerk governance officer? Any other nominations? Has been nominated and seconded, all those in favor of the election of Mark Paul Johnson as clerk governance officer, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations with a question mark, Dr. Johnson.
Yes.
For your service. At this time, we'll move on to the election of the clerk designee. I would hear a nomination for clerk designee. Abby.
Oh.
It has always been Abby Johnson since I've been on the board.
Second.
Abby, you've been nominated.
I will accept.
You. Are there other nominations for clerk designee? Other nominations? All those in favor of electing Abby Johnson as clerk designee, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Next is the election of treasurer. Would hear nominations for the treasurer. Commissioner Lyons has served last year as the treasurer after the resignation of Commissioner Harder.
So I nominate Commissioner Lyons.
I second.
Commissioner Lyons, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Are there other nominations for treasurer? Other nominations? All those in favor of electing for Lyons as our treasurer, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye and opposed? Congratulations, Commissioner Lyons. Finally, we have our election of secretary. This is traditionally the executive secretary to the board and as such, it's been Terry Grisb over this past year, just in case people are wondering, who has served in this position over the last year. I would hear a nomination. I would hear a nomination for secretary.
Nominate Terry Grisb.
Terry.
Second.
Terry, you've been nominated as the board secretary. Do you accept?
Yes, I do.
Are there other nominations for secretary? Any other nominations? All those in favor of the election of Terry Grisb as the board secretary, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye and opposed? Thank you again. I think, Terry, this is another one that comes with a question mark as the congratulations. So, but thank you. At this time, we'll move on to our seating arrangements. Board members, you will draw numbers for seating. We will reseat at the next meeting. For your information, seat one is there where Commissioner Zer currently is, going around to seat six where Dr. Becca's name tag is.
You can just put your name on the slip and I'll let them at the end of the floor.
Superintendent Johnson, if you will, please draw for Dr. Becca and then we'll leave whatever number is left for Commissioner Clements. That would be seat three.
I stay right where I am.
No, we'll just leave the last. Yeah, Josh can have. And then Terry will come back around and you can just hand yours back in and then we'll reseed it next time. Or maybe not reseed it. Did y'all just trade over there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Little kid's corner.
Thank you.
So that concludes our organizational meeting for the year. At this time, I would hear a motion to adjourn the organizational meeting.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Organizational meeting is, sorry, all those opposed? The organizational meeting is adjourned. We'll move on to the adoption of tonight's agenda. I would hear a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
So move.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye and opposed? Our agenda is adopted for tonight. We'll move on to our recognitions. We have a slew of them. I will turn it over to Superintendent Johnson. I presume we'll go through all the recognitions and then do the photos afterward.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Enjoy.
Good evening, Chair Nordin, board members, student representative, and distinguished guests today. Yes, we have six of them. The first two have three people and we'll take the pictures afterward. The first is Longfellow's Kindness Olympics. In celebration of the 2022 Winter Olympics, Longfellow held their own Olympic event, a Kindness Olympics. The school already has a program running called CAOTIA, where students earn tickets when they are caught doing something outstanding. They collect tickets throughout the week and on Fridays randomly pick winners from each grade level. For the month of February, Longfellow kept track of the number of tickets each classroom received and then held a medal ceremony to celebrate the top three classes. They had some great collaboration with Locust Lane from teacher and Olympian Mike Poplinsky, who shared a special video message with the school. This was truly an all-school effort, from staff members spending extra time counting the CAOTIA tickets, to teachers and staff going the extra mile to submit tickets and recognize student hard work. In March, winners were celebrated with their prizes, including extra time in the gym for the bronze medal winner, a PJ and donut party for the silver medal winner, and a pizza and movie party for the gold medal winner. And first grade teacher Angela Steinmetz will accept a certificate this evening. Her class was the silver medal Kindness Olympic winner. Secondly, the Herb Cole Educational Foundation Awards. We're excited to announce that we had one teacher and one student honored by the Herb Cole Educational Foundation. Congratulations to Memorial High School French teacher Selena Smith Reuter for receiving a teacher fellowship for her superior ability to inspire a love of learning in her students, her ability to motivate others, and her leadership and service within and outside the classroom. Congratulations are in order as well to McKinley Charter School student Peyton Brock for receiving an initiative scholarship as chosen by her school for overcoming significant obstacles, demonstrating exceptional initiative in the classroom, and showing strong promise for succeeding in college and beyond. Now, from 7.3 to 7.6, May recognitions, May 1st. Yesterday was school principals' day, so I'd like to give a shout out to all the amazing building principals here in the district. You're incredible. We're lucky to have all of you working for students, families, staff, and the community. May 2nd today is also the first day of National Teacher School Staff Appreciation Week. We're very appreciative of our teachers and staff. Thank them for all their dedication to our students and families all year long. We are truly fortunate to have the best of the best working in our district. National School Nurse Day is coming up on May 11th. Our school nurses optimize student health and learning every day of the year. School nurses serve as a critical health hub for students, ensuring they're ready for learning by managing complex chronic conditions, identifying and addressing mental health issues, leveling the field on health disparities, promoting healthy behaviors, connecting families to healthcare providers, and handling medical emergencies, thanks to our school nurses for all they do. And finally, May is also National Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. We're so appreciative of all our families and students who bring their special heritage to our schools all year long. Thank you very much. Ms. Steinmetz, thanks for...
Oh, I did.
Okay. I just wasn't sure if you were... It could be. They'll assign that through the boss one. If you've got something ready, then I'm happy to share. Just wanted to make sure.
The PJ and donuts would have been nice.
We'll now move on to our public forum. The board provides 30 minutes at our business meetings for, to address the board. Each member of the public who has signed up is allowed up to four minutes. I apologize in advance, I will cut you off if, after four minutes. So please be mindful of the time. It will, should be up on the screen for you to, as you go. The school board does not hear personal complaints of any school personnel nor any person connected with the school district in public setting. I will ask that each person please state their name and address for the record before they begin their time. Our first speaker tonight is Jeffrey Sixell.
From where, anywhere?
Yeah, you're welcome to stand anywhere. People tend to stand at the podium there, but it's not necessary. Our microphone picks you up kind of wherever you are, but that's, that's perfect.
I'm just here on behalf of my son. I'm an Eau Claire expert, school district expert. My son graduated North in 2012, and there's a rumor going around that they're going to cut out the German classes at North. Is that true or false?
The board doesn't respond to questions during public comment, I'm sorry.
Anyway, that he would like very much to keep the four-year foreign language classes going. His teacher, Lynn Verden, was the only teacher that he had for all four years. He went on to graduate with a master's from UW Madison. He was a 2011 state champion of the computer maintenance and maintenance technology for at North. And in 2012, he was state champion of the EV team. So his opinion, or he works for NASA now, I don't believe it, that he got many Ds list in his eight years, or whatever, six, seven years going to UW Madison. So that he would very much like to keep the academic programs in the schools that it were helped him very much. And I hope that other kids can go along with that, follow, you know, following his basic thing. But that's about it. Any questions, Zer?
Thank you, Mr. Sixell.
Very proud of that kid.
Should be.
Sounds like you should be, yeah. Our next speaker is Caspian Hebert. Excuse me if I mispronounced. Someone who's constantly called Norden as opposed to Nordin, I apologize, but thank you. So your name and address, please.
Caspian A. Bear, 1637 Skills Avenue, Eau Claire, Wisconsin. I am here to whom may this concern. I go to Memorial High School. I am currently a freshman. And there's tons of clubs at Memorial. And I've always, I'm always trying to strive in academics and also when I play my sports football and all that. But looking around at the clubs and everything, it looked like there's one missing and I wanted to bring up if starting a fishing team at Memorial High School would be of interest for whom this may concern. I do lots of stuff with Otter Outdoors, Shields, and other larger brands. And I make posts on social media that are liked by a lot of people. And there is a very large community of fishermen and just anyone who fishes at Memorial. And I want to see if there's something maybe we could start. One of the main concerns I would have would be funding, since, well, it's a very expensive thing, especially boating, fuel, and bait and tackle. It's kind of a lot. But there's a few brands I'd be willing to help out, like sponsoring our memorial and helping the process. So I want to see if that's something maybe we could...
Thank you. We'll make sure that we connect with right people to answer that. Our next speaker is Lucinda Kemet.
I'm going to put my thing for you to see. Oh, well, I'll get it later if you want. My name is Lucinda Kemet. I live at E4715 Queens Drive. I have three topics for today. I want to share my full support for long-term planning and the referendum process. I would also encourage you to include an open-minded, real big 20,000-foot view brainstorm regarding the current structure of our high schools as part of that process. Second topic, I have sent several emails related to public-private partnerships that my family is involved with in other states. And our DPI report card shows that we are lacking in work-based learning-related areas related to the state. I'm coming here to ask formally, is ECASD using public-private partnerships to expand educational offerings? If so, can we do more? If not, why? Those two topics come from the part of me who has spent 24 years in business-to-business strategic marketing. Now, I'm going to speak as a yoga teacher and a yoga therapist, and the subject is going to switch to love. I was troubled by the school board election in April by kind of the partisan grouping of the candidates. And from my heart, that is nothing personal. I understand why someone would make that choice. But in response to what troubled me, I wrote this document and brought it to you on April 4th to encourage you to work for unity in our community. Since April 4th, I have had related topics keep coming across my radar, and I have much more to share. The sources for this new information include the Easter edition of the Cincinnati Inquirer. The cover says, "Toxic polarization is killing our country." A conversation facilitated by a local Democrat and religious leader on the topic of how to be friends with a conservative. I've also been involved with a Native American elder and Episcopal bishop and an author, two Buddhist teachers who are passionate about social justice, and a local middle school social worker and counselor. Four minutes does not allow me to express the beauty of all of these conversations, but some of the common themes that keep bubbling up are, one, hate does not dissolve hate. Love is the only antidote for hate. The idea that keeps coming up of hate the sin, love the sinner. Now on to topics that are a little bit more challenging, and so here's my summary of the four topics that bubble up. The first one that keeps coming up, as I said in my letter on April 4th, there are many more people who fall in the middle of some extremes on important issues. The media and social media algorithms amplify the voices of the extremist. It feels like all that most of us know how to do is to push people on one camp or the other, which through a series of varying mechanisms, I would argue, is creating much more hate. Finally, the Buddhist teachings I've encountered this past month suggest that leaders must widen your personal circle of love in order to increase love and crowd out hate. I love that. Widen your personal circle of love. So that's what I'm here to talk about. Who can you bring into your personal circle of love? Maybe not the people who are way out here. However, I will attest that there are many community members in the middle who share common values about the importance of public education and equal rights for all, but might not understand or agree with language or details in some policies. Bring in those people to your circle. Yoga teaches that bringing someone into your circle will require you to listen with a humble heart. As leaders, you can bless others by listening to them with a humble heart, and your example of this will have a ripple effect. One of my yoga students and middle school social worker said this on Saturday. We can't effectively help our kids if their parents are still broken, broken-hearted, and damaged. Further local conversations that day made the point that bridges must be built before there are crises, so we have a foundation of trust and love before tragedy. I will share a statement quoting what a nun said in a conversation this week. "Living together, even though we do not agree, requires the grace of humility to know that what we see and what we believe is necessarily incomplete, that there is more, that the person with whom we do not agree might very well have another facet of larger truth we have not yet recognized. To live together in love, we need to keep our hearts open to expand possibilities to greater, wider, more glorious truth than we have ever imagined. Then, we get up the next day and we do it again." Thank you.
Next speaker is Lori Plackey Worth. All right, I do not see Mrs. Plackey Worth here in the room. And that concludes our public forum. At this time, we'll move on to our regular reports. Although we will reassign committees and our liaisons by the next meeting, our previous budget development committee chair and legislative liaison do have a report prepared for tonight. So we'll start with Budget Development Committee and Commissioner Lyons.
President Nordin, we met Budget Development, met on April 27th. It was our first-person meeting, I think, in several years, so that was, that was nice. Budget Development has been looking at a lot of data lately, and this meeting really focused on a variety of information and data that we poured through. We looked at the revenue limit rankings, where Eau Claire sits in the bottom third. We talked about facility priority and some of the information that came out of the long-term planning documents that were prepared recently. We also talked about engaging demo and trends and asking them perhaps to come back to a full board meeting. We looked at referendum passage rates across the state. We took a look at class size discussions, and we also took a look at salary and benefit number. And one of the reasons why we were looking at all of these is we're in the process of coming up with a process to bring voices in, to talk about how we're going to sit and win out for a recommendation to the larger board and to bring forth information to all of us so that we can digest that in the working group sessions.
Thank you, Commissioner Lyons. I will now move on to the legislative liaison, Dr. Johnson.
Last Thursday, April 28th, State Superintendent Dr. Jill Underly convened the first meeting of a new State Superintendent's Reading Advisory Council. Collectively, the Reading Advisory Council's membership represents a variety of geographical areas, school district sizes, races, ethnicities, and reading philosophies. Council members are expected to bring their expertise about early literacy to the council and to learn together and share information and recommendations with DPI about how to strengthen literacy learning in Wisconsin schools. The council's initial focus will be on early reading, K through 2. It will hold a series of online meetings that will be open to the public as observers, but will not include public participation. On April 20th, school districts across the state received a $40.6 million in library aid, aid which is dispersed annually to public school libraries across the state in April. This year's allocation was paid out on Monday, April 25th. Each school district receives an allocation based on its reported resident census count and the per-child amount. This year's distribution is $35, roughly 31 cents per census student. Common school fund are to be used by school librarians and library media specialists primarily to purchase books and technology for students to use in school libraries. Eau Claire's census count for ages 4 through 20 was 14,008, which came to an amount disbursement of $494,678 that were distributed. Thank you.
Thank you. Now move on to our consent agendas. For each of our consent agendas, the board acts with one vote without discussion. The board has been provided background material or has discussed these items at previous meetings. If a board member wishes to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and voted on separately. Tonight's superintendent consent agenda includes human resources, employment report, final notice of non-renewal of teachers with limited-term contracts, five-year capital project bids, and WIAA membership renewal for 2022, 2023. I would hear a motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda.
So move.
Terry, if you would conduct a roll call vote.
Commissioner Farrar?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordin?
Yes.
Commissioner Zer?
Yes.
Now move on to the board's consent agenda. The board's consent agenda tonight includes the minutes of board meeting, April 18th, 2022, and changes to board meeting dates for 2022, 2023. I would hear a motion to approve the board's consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye and opposed? Thank you. We'll now move on to monitoring of district results. We have our final monitoring report for this first cycle. You know, obviously, we moved R3 and R4 to later, but we have had a chance to see those for the first time. This is the final one that we have yet to consider. That is OE 13 facilities. At this time, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Johnson.
Thank you. After sharing the draft with you a little over two weeks ago, many things need to be shared, and I'd just like to acknowledge the work of Abby Johnson, Kim Kohler, Jeff Nestor, Brian Marks, Kay Marks, and Michelle Radke for various pieces of this. I think you'll understand, especially when we get to 13.1 and we talk a little bit of survey data and the things will be moving on, you may think, well, why does Michelle Radke have data on this? I'll be able to explain that very shortly, but overall, the evidence points to, in my certification, in my summary, in compliance with exception, there's no doubt of the evidence. For 13.1, I like to, I like to share this a little bit... to the evidence. For 13.1, I like to share this a little bit. Actually, oh, that's fine, Terry. You can go ahead. 13.1. Data rich and analysis poor, and this is an interesting time for us and a very positive time for us because, as I had shared before in the evidence with, from Jeff Nestor, Abby Johnson, Kim Kohler, there are cleaning expectations, a summer checklist, a sample for one of our elementary schools, and you were able, if you were able to see some of the tabs on those, we do have those expectations, dates, times, duties, and stand, but we do not, through the entire district, go through to declare if 95% or are exceeded. So that's further work that must be done. And I put down for the exceptions. I have not done that previously, I think, as stated in the evidence, but, you know, in speaking with Jeff Nestor and Abby and Kim, you know, the collection and the warehousing of the expectation results will be complete by August 1, 2022. For the second indicator, our prioritized essential work orders are completed within the week it's received. Did not put attachments for that necessarily in compliance with exceptions, but with Mr. Nestor sharing with me that, you know, they're reviewed and prioritized the day the work orders received, and the prioritization is based on the impact it has. I mean, the mission critical, the, you know, opening of school, heat, electrical. You know it as board members when I text all of you at 7:37 and say, hey, on the north side, we've got three schools out. So that's where all of that, all of the resources go. The exception, district-wide collection, again, and warehousing of the prioritized and essential work orders results will be complete by the 1st of August. The third, this is something I'm proud of with our district, a couple districts I've worked in before, maybe not as much so what I've experienced, but an indicator three, an indicator four, when it comes to the general safety inspections and the fire, you know, there are going to be recommendations, and sometimes there would be a violation. In a district as large as ours, violations do occur. It's just how quickly, how immediately do you fix those? For example, Jeff and Brian had both explained to me that for fire, if a fire extinguisher is not working, it is, you know, it's, the fire marshal contacts them or the building principal. The building principals know to contact Brian and/or Jeff, and those are replaced immediately. So that's an example of the fire, but in general safety as well. I did not know this, that, you know, the department inspects our playground equipment every month, and if things need to be addressed, they're addressed immediately. So if you go to number four, or indicator four, the documentation we had as of last week, I believe it was the 23rd, two safety violations, one fire safety, one elevator safety. For indicator five, in compliance with exceptions, this is the data piece, and we do have, I think you remember from last May, DPI does a general climate survey to all students, staff, and family members. And I had only put down the one example for the levels of aesthetics, and I think I put down just examples of questions that Michelle Radke had. What we're going to do this year is, for all of our OEs and Rs, whenever it's cited where we need some survey data, we're actually having a meeting this coming Wednesday with Michelle, as well as others, to be able to, okay, are these the questions we want to utilize? Do we want to alter the questions? Here's our baseline data. So, anyway, 13.1 went into quite a bit of detail there, but I just wanted to share that. And then the baseline data will be collected and shared with you by the 1st, as would, I believe, we're going to launch the survey, the DPI survey, in probably mid-May, 15th to the 20th, somewhere around there. For 13.2 and 13.3, in compliance, our geographic attendance data regularly is reviewed to assure that balance, enrollment balance, equity in student enrollment, in compliance, due largely to the Demo and Trends Facility Planning Committee. Just another example of the board presentation from the 15th, where I do believe we had the, a chair of that committee or a representative speak that evening. So indicator two, same type of thing. Kim Kohler does facilitate that committee, and then enrollment data is reviewed monthly. So in compliance there. 13.3, I shouldn't say it. That's in progress, not in compliance. That is directly linked to our OE 3, so when we get more with OE 3, as we're meeting with that climate committee and all the other things that we're doing, from our buildings and grounds and recycling standpoint, we will update those. For 13.4, in compliance with exceptions, the long-term facilities planning, quite a bit of help here from Jeff Nestor, from Abby Johnson, Kim Kohler as well. For the indicator number one, that capital facility improvement maintenance plan with the prioritized list, you had the evidence there. And then ATS and R study from 21, 22, that just, I think that supports it. However, in looking forward to indicator two as well, you know, report us to the completion of the items from the previous year's plan. We do not do that. And the middle part of that sentence, as well as the upcoming year's adoptions and approvals, well, those are noted in past board meetings, December 6th and February 7th, you know, presented to the board annually, how we would like to make sure that we are in compliance in the future. When I talk to Jeff and when I talk to Abby, when certain projects are completed, and I think, I think back to maybe last year, I think it was when Longfellow had some problems with the parking lot, and it was going to cost maybe a little bit more than we had thought, $15,000, $20,000, if I remember correctly, updating the board. Well, that's how Jeff and Abby communicate continually, spring, summer, whenever these projects are going on. So in speaking with Jeff, he felt that, you know what, we can have after the, you know, the fiscal year, and we have a month in, each annual report afterward, we would have that occur. It would take him from July 1st to August 1st to basically take everything he's been sharing with Abby. He said, you know, he'd like to be able to provide some pictures. I know Dr. Hardbeck has done that in the past with certain types of the progress on our capital improvements. So anyway, I thought that would be helpful, and in speaking with Jeff and Abby, that seemed to be very doable. And if the board wishes anything else additional or what have you, you can direct me, and then I'd speak with Abby and Jeff about that. 13.5, public facilities use, in compliance with exceptions. In speaking with Bev Christiansen, I did not thank her earlier on. She basically, you know, takes this, is in charge of this, a lot of responsibility. I put the evidence, our facility use and rental, in outlining A through D, that's in compliance, timely fashion, they're issued within two days of receipt. In compliance with exceptions, and I would actually, if I had to lean one way, I'd probably say in compliance, what Bev had shared with me is from January 1st until the present, when there are singular or, you know, individual people who, you know, who ask for those permits, they're issued within a day, most of them. Not necessarily two, it would be, it would be one day. However, the exception to that would be on June 1st. If you scroll down a little bit more, Terry, thank you. You know, we get applications from youth groups for the upcoming school year. Tends to be athletic events or athletic teams and things. The system is just not able to handle that as quickly. But in speaking with Bev, you know, within a week or two, those are all completed, and I think that's very fair, you know, when people hand those in on, or they submit them on June 1st when it opens. For 13.6, oh, I'm sorry, scroll back just a little bit. With every formal procedural complaint, it's in compliance. There are not many that occur, but when they do, they're usually asking about insurance and things. You know, in the past two years, though, you know, we were constructing and implementing our new scheduling system, as well as limiting the use of the facilities due to COVID. That tended to help, I guess, the transition. If the board desires the data from prior years, we must mine the data from a previous system, which will take some more time. So I would take the, I would take the direction of the board on that. For 13.6, in compliance with exceptions, the, you know, the safety of our students, the protection, emergency planning, quite a bit of support from Brian Marks and from Kay Marks. The emergency management plans are present and maintained. I did share with the board earlier the document we use, but we do not publish that for the general public, obviously. That's an internal document. In compliance, safety and security managers in possession of it. It's an internal-only document. It was last updated in October of 2021, and obviously, like I said, shared with the board. Right now, we are working on alterations to our visitor policy and protocol in our schools and district buildings. That is ongoing, as Brian said, right now. Indicator two, mandatory training for our staff, using both Brian and Kay with this. The crisis response training, it's completed that Nemo Week, our orientation week for all new employees. The PowerPoint is listed there. It's part of the in-service verification process for our new staff. Four of the 23 components are listed there that are very specific to safety. Our crisis response teams are expected to meet quarterly at the building level due to COVID. The mock simulations and quarterly meetings had not occurred quarterly. For number three, in compliance, we do, I think, probably as a result of the pandemic, but from what I have experienced in speaking with the Health Department, certainly the Police Department, but also what I've learned through county emergency management, this happens very often, and there, you know, the evidence, I think, is very clear. For 13.7 and 13.8, firmly in compliance, the land acquisition, in speaking with Kim Kohler, she could speak more to this, but because Demo and Trends is, you know, such a regularly scheduled meeting and go through quite a bit of data, and many of you served on that committee as well, you know what that is, what that produces for the district. Let's see. Kim had put down, as evidence, had assisted with meetings from back in the spring of '20, which directly impacts 13.7 up above. And then 13.8, we do have policy 940 and 940 rule, whenever a facility or a portion of facility is named for a person or a donor. I will take any comments or questions if I cannot answer them. I do have some of our staff here that could discuss that. But again, thank you for your patience with that. I know it was a very quick turnaround with two weeks. We don't normally do that, but very confident in the staff and what they were able to pull together.
Thank you, Superintendent Johnson. The floor is now open for comments and questions from board members. Dr. Johnson?
Yeah, just moving forward, what I would like to see, for OE 13.4, the inclusion of how, because the items mentioned, A through F in 13.4, we were able to utilize some extra funding to address those pieces, as well as, I think, from the last referendum, addressing those pieces. So that gives us a framework of kind of, we're addressing these progress, and then it leads on to everything else that was added in indicator one and two. And so if, kind of, our current, currently where we are, being indicated, and, you know, as a rule, I think that just would add a little bit to kind of those other two indicators. Thank you.
Reminds me, I think you're already doing this, Commissioner Zer, but are you taking notes for tonight for the summary statement? Thank you. I'm still getting used to reminding whoever the third members are doing that beforehand, so thank you for being on top. Commissioner Lyons?
I thought this OE was put together quite well. As a member of Demo and Trends, I remember joining that committee and being very impressed at how forward-looking that committee was, and looking at the populations, and looking at the regions of the city, the percentages of seats that were filled, and a real, a really methodical approach to planning. And it was very impressive. And as I read this, I also think that some of the smaller maintenance things are also well-covered. As a board member, I'm not, I don't want to know if you missed the 100% two-day deadline on work orders. I think it's a phenomenal goal to have the two-day work orders, getting back to people within five days. The service orientation of maintenance and the attention to fixing things right away was also very impressive. But I also think as a budget officer, because I'm a former retired budget officer, and the one part that's in the middle that I think that we could flesh out a bit more is that longer-term maintenance piece, that you do talk about being addressed in the referendum. But what will assure that we're really adding to the maintenance is that long-term approach to budgeting that is setting aside resources year after year after year. And as your Director of Grounds, your Director of Maintenance comes forward and says, this boiler is going to need to be replaced in three to five years, that we've set aside dollars for that. I'd like to see somehow that built in, and I also think it's one of the reasons why we very much need to have this as a focal point of the referendum, because that kind of long-term budget approach is also going to take resources that right now the district is a bit short on. One little nitpicky item, and I think this is an excellent OE, somehow, the naming of facilities doesn't really fit into this document like everything else. To me, naming of facilities is to honor people that serve the district or are giving donor foundations. And I know that in the district policies under facilities, it's addressed as a facility policy. But as I think about an operational expectation for facilities, I'm thinking about them being high-quality, how the public is utilizing them, the maintenance, the security and health, and the naming, just, it's fine in there. It just didn't seem to fit as well as some of the other things. Thanks.
So, I don't know if this fits here, but the thing that I was contemplating as we were reading this was, are there documents that exist or some sort of report structure where building staff, leadership can report to you guys what, you know, I mean, I don't know if that is the five-year capital plan, or if that's more like an audit where we go in externally and study the building and then make a list, or if there's actually documents that building principals and/or building staff can, because it would be interesting, I feel like, to see those two things side by side, to see how, how building staff are able to communicate a need, and then how all those things make it onto lists, or make the, just from that two-way communication piece of how do we hear the people who are in those buildings dealing with those boilers and those lights?
I can answer with it on a couple levels, and I'm actually looking back to either Abby or Kim, to the second part of it while they grab the microphone. I think first off, given with what, and I think it was a week ago, meeting with Manny Van Veleen, Michelle Radke, I'm wondering if we could correlate questions 56 through 60 when it comes to facilities, when our staff take a survey. I mean, then we could maybe break it down by building as, are certain needs getting met? That's probably the first part of this, but not really what you're looking for. That's one thing I'd be wondering about, the cleanliness of the building, the work environment, the, you know, those four or five questions. But the part about the five-year capital improvements, I know that when there were meetings this past year, the folks were going to the principal to discuss. I don't know how those would be documented, but Abby or Kim, do you have any idea the discussion from maybe staff to principals and principals to? from maybe staff to principals and principals to others? Feel free.
I can talk about the facility study that was done in December. So principals met with the architects and engineers and they kind of walked through the building and talked. There was others there as well, but I know that we have principals specific feedback and concerns that was shared in part of that really big document that I believe the board has as well. There's a section with all of the comments by school and things that were concerned. As far as getting on the five-year capital plan, that can happen at any point in time. We communicate with custodians and building service managers, and I put it in the budget instructions each year, that if you have concerns or you have needs, we've kind of defined what's a capital improvement and needs on the five-year capital plan, what's more of a repair. And then that communication is supposed to hopefully make its way up from the custodian level or building service manager up into the big list. And then when the building service managers get around the table, when they're working to develop that five-year capital plan budget, they are prioritizing based upon the need of the building, the severity of it, what's the cost going to look like. And then they have to make some tough decisions, which sometimes happen in concurrence with Kim, sometimes happen in concurrence with me, depending upon what it is. And then, you know, we help figure out and prioritize if we need to, and then that's what comes to the board as far as the five-year capital. I think there was a question about, you know, is that documented anywhere? And we just updated it last week, actually, because we didn't realize it wasn't updated. But on the district website, under Buildings and Grounds, there's a facility information, I think. And so the current five-year plan is out there. And it shows kind of, here's the needs that they were determined and kind of how they were planned to go forward. Now, that was before the ATS R study was completed. So now the team will work to kind of update, what did the architects and engineers say compared to what do we see from our buildings and what do we know? Did we get everything? Do you have anything to add? Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, you know, that's great, Abby. Thank you. No, I appreciate that, how the staff kind of feeds that. So I think that, I think that just hearing from, you know, I don't know if it's the survey, but maybe it's just something that to think about, not necessarily like an omission from here, but I think it's something that it would be beneficial to see, and I think it's something we beneficial to see throughout all of the OE. It's just where are those connection points from, you know, 500 Main down to the school buildings and vice versa? Right? And if we can document those in all of the monitoring reports of just, and I don't know, again, I don't know how we do that, but I think that that will help, you know, future boards kind of keep their finger on the pulse of what that two-way communication between this building and the rest of the district kind of looks like. And similarly, as we are talking referenda now and in the future, right? How do we speak as one big district community, right? Like about what our goals and our vision is? And that's coming, you know, both from our public through us and down, but also from our buildings where the kids are every day up. And that, you know, we're getting fed from both sides. I think that's really important. So I don't know if that's through the survey component of it or if that's just in that five-year capital improvement process by which those things get on the list.
I think, and I would never want to put any of our principals really on point tonight, but in, while I served as a principal and when I supervised principals in the past, when we had the five-year capital plan or we had a one-year capital, it was part of, either as a principal, when I had my, I called it a BLT, my building leadership team, when we had those types of items, that was part of what the building leadership team had shared. Well, we'd like to look at these improvements or we'd like to look at these supplies. And then the same thing held true when I supervised principals. They did have that as part of, and I can't remember exactly what time of year is probably December, January, so then things could get planned for summer. But that was just maybe for a one-year process. And I know that it's critical with a referendum, we need to look further. But that was part of our BLT or our team leaders, whatever you, and I would not want to put Jake Donzie with Mark in the audience here at Robbins, does that occur? But I'm just saying, that would be a very logical step and that I think our principals probably do have, they definitely have their building leadership teams, their grade-level leadership teams, departmental heads, what have you. But I think that, like you said, it's better than just a survey, but it's more of that dialogue with people who are connected all across the building.
Seeing no other requests to be recognized, I would hear a motion to approve OE 13.
Agreed.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of approving OE 13, please say aye. Aye. And opposed? Any extensions? Thank you, OE 13 is approved. We will move on. We have one more business item on tonight's agenda that is...
Are we supposed to review this right afterwards?
Yes, we are. Thank you. It's been, since we had the three and four moved, I didn't have to go do it. Yes, so thank you, Commissioners, I appreciate that. So if you could just review what you have for our notes and then we'll move on to the job market after that.
Sure. So strengths from Phil, please, with what's included in the monitoring report, appreciates the work of Demo and Trends and their work included in the report. Likes that maintenance and day-to-day issues are covered well. Weaknesses, areas that maybe need a little bit of improvement. Long-term budgeting in maintenance from Phil. This could be stronger, financial planning around, oh, this is, sorry about the, sorry. Financial planning around long-term planning? Very bad English. But this could be beneficial for future referenda. Phil also, naming facilities component may be misplaced in this OE. It's just probably for us to consider in the future. And then myself, potential to increase documentation or narrative around staff building level involvement in facilities planning. Omissions, Marquell, in 13.4 particularly, including past reference projects completed, financial funding being used to address need. Status of where we are at may be beneficial, more like a narrative status of where we are at may be beneficial under this component as well. Did I capture all that well? Right?
Thank you. We'll use that, basically, that becomes the summary statement. I'll change those two instances of the word "planning" within five words.
Please keep all the "planning."
But yes, thank you. We'll now move on to our matters reserved for board action for the evening. We have one item that is the job description and labor market review for 12-month and certified employees. We discussed this at the last meeting and decided to have it as a single item for board consideration and action tonight. So I asked K and Abby to just give a very brief review of what we talked about, but then mostly it's our discussion and action for the evening. So I'll turn it over to K and Abby.
Thank you. So if you remember from the last meeting, we spoke a little bit at length about the job description and labor market review. And so as Tim said, we're just going to briefly familiarize you with what we spoke about last time. So we talked about two different years that we went through. And so the first one, we can do it a little bit in reverse. We reviewed with you the salary comparisons for the certified group. And if you recall, there are no modifications that came out of that work. So there's nothing to be recommended for any changes to the salary schedule for the certified group. And then the second one was the 12-month hourly positions. That was the year-two group. There were 32 positions that were recommended for a salary grade modification. We went through all of those at the last meeting. You can see, this is the slide that indicates the changes that were to be recommended. And then this next slide is the actual price of the salary grade modifications that were being recommended. The top grid, the top grid is the change to Fund 10, our operating budget. The bottom grid is the change that falls into Fund 50 because there was a couple of positions that were in the food nutrition group. So that totaled just a little bit over the $9,000 that was going to be in Fund 50. So the administrative recommendation that we have before the board tonight is to approve both of those, one being the 12-month position salary grade modifications, and then the other being that there is no modification for the board to take on tonight regarding the certified salary schedule. So that...
Thank you.
To the board.
So any discussion or remaining questions from board members? Dr. Johnson?
Yeah, so... The process of determining, I guess I am, what's the overarching goal of this labor market review? Is to deal with the competitiveness of salaries? Is that the overarching goal? And I just want to know, because I guess for me, and you know, some of the questions that I was asking the last, what would be, well, first of all, what's the goal of the, is the labor market review just intended to allow salaries to be competitive at the entry level? Or kind of where?
So the policy is written for a couple of different purposes. The first is that it's a job description and labor market review. So the first piece that happens is that when you go back to these, when you go back to these, I think in the original presentation, there was like 46 job descriptions that were reviewed. So with each of those, the actual job description gets reviewed. There's a process where it's reviewed by the people that are currently in the position, the supervisor of those positions, and then through the HR department. So the first piece is to make sure that whatever's on paper is still relevant to what it is that the district's asking of that position. You can understand that over a five-year time period, because now the cycle is five years, things change in what is on paper and what in reality happens in some of these positions. And until this process happened, it was many times a lot longer than five years before anything was ever looked at in a job description. So the process happened so that we review those every five years to make sure that what we're asking for in requirements for the position and the knowledge, skills, and abilities of the position, that all of those things are still consistent with what we're expecting of the job. And then if so, once everything is updated, that then any changes that are made to that, that the new job description is relevant to the labor market based on whatever modifications may have been made to that job description. So the money piece comes second, but the first piece is to make sure that what we're asking out of that position actually reflects what's happening in practice.
All right, so then, so then one of my follow-ups would be then, so based on, and that's applicable to those currently holding those positions and then those individuals who potentially are likely will, that we're trying to recruit and hire, correct? So what's the, is the only process for salary grade modification based upon this labor market review? Is that essentially kind of what the district is having available to it?
Be able to change the salary grade that a job is placed at?
Yeah, so, yeah, so is, so basically, we're using this labor market review as, is this the only process in place within the district for like salary grade modification? Is that how the labor market reviews? Yeah, I guess for me, it's just kind of one of those things where you, I know I'm just having a difficult time where potentially, if this is the only process that exists, and it's kind of interesting, this must be like a huge thing, because I see UW System is re-upped this whole idea. Because if this is the only piece that we particularly have, I guess there's some concerns as it relates to this process for existing employees in an attempt to actually avoid actually salary inversion and compression. And so I'm just curious, because moving forward, however the vote is tonight, I would like to have a discussion that I'm not sure this should be that only avenue, if that's the case, as it's been explained. So thank you for those points of clarification.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Lyons?
I just wanted to express my appreciation for accommodating my request at the last meeting that all of the salary grade recommendations and the salary grade modifications are included in next year's budget. It's something that, you know, I remembered from the first iteration of these that we did, that it was also marked as, and I just wanted to express my appreciation that it was included, I'll be voting, or voting yes for it.
So at this time, I would hear a motion to approve the...
I would motion to approve the salary grade modifications. And there was a choice, right?
Just as recommended?
As recommended.
As recommended.
I'll second. Discussion on the motion? Oh, sorry, Dr. Johnson?
Yeah, so, you know, I think for me, once again, what I'm struggling with, I guess, I agree with, let me go back to the abbreviated kind of approval. So that the year-two 12-month position salary grade modification recommendations, I'm, you know, I'm, given in light of the responses for me, I think I'm a little bit uncertain about potentially the lack of modifications and our considerations for the certified piece there. So that's where I'm struggling with. So, yeah, but I appreciate the additional insight that was provided. Thank you.
Am I missing anybody again? I'm really on my game tonight. Seeing no additional requests for the floor, I'll call the question. Terry, if you would conduct a roll call vote, the motion on the floor is to approve the administrative recommendations as presented.
Commissioner Farrar? Commissioner Johnson?
No.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordine?
Yes.
Commissioner Zer?
Yes.
Motion carries. At this point, we will move then into our regular board debrief for our welcome meeting. And this is a time in the evening where we, I'm sure you've witnessed as you watch through, but we go around and each of us discusses one item, one thing that we feel that we did well as a board this evening and one area in which we could continue to improve as you have them. It does fall to the third member of the agenda-setting group to lead that. So I'll turn it over to Commissioner Zer to facilitate our debrief.
He just introduced it so well. I don't feel the need to say anything else. But I won't make you start. That's just... So Commissioner Lyons?
What went well? Welcome Stephanie to the board. It's a pleasure to have you. I think that we have been... we have been a, a, a very good team, and I think that you will add a lot to our, our conversations. Um, I think that went well, I thought the meeting went well. Um, I am glad that the meeting, as it began, didn't, um, lead into further disruption. I appreciate, you know, everyone that, um, has patience and, and, and some civility to express opinions that disagree with the board. And we're certainly open to hearing those, but the, the manner in which they're presented makes a big difference. So.
Uh, yeah, uh, I guess the, uh, election process of officers went, uh, smoothly, I guess, uh, some with some questionable, uh, designations, but, uh, yeah, and, uh, things that we could continue to work, well, I, I look forward to, uh, really, um, kind of, you know, doing a, a deeper dive in how, um, this governance model really results in a difference in, uh, uh, a difference in how things are, 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 are done, that we can not only communicate that the governance model, uh, uh, is working favorably, but that it's demonstrated to, uh, those, uh, who are most impacted by the policies that, that happen. So thank you.
Commissioner Nordin?
Yes, so Dr. Farrar, welcome again. Excited to have you. It's, it's nice to look forward to a, a year that I think will be impactful. And Dr. Johnson, I agree with you that I think this, this year is the year that we hope to start to really dig into the student results especially. And I think, um, you know, holding the administration accountable to making sure that we can accurately see, are we having an impact on, on student results? Uh, you know, as a researcher, I'm sure you're aware, it might be hard to tie our direct action to student results, there's a few layers of separation there. But the idea that we're focused on those and that we're looking for those improvements and those real changes to students' lives, and then, of course, in many ways, you know, the work and the, the operational expectations that impact our staff and things. So I, I agree with you that I think this is the year that I hope that we're all ready to really dig in and really get that focus. I have a few items, my agenda about, um, hopefully giving the administration to, you know, look, look ahead and, and planning out those focus on results sections for meetings, being ready for those well in advance, so we can really start to dig in more than we get a chance when we have just the full results report that we have some of that, throughout the years, that when we get to R2 again, or when R3 and R4 come back, we have more components of that. And I, and I think in terms of, you know, what we need to continue to work on, that's it, right? Because now, had a chance to go through these, we have, uh, you know, we had one point, I had mentioned that look at this as a little bit of a baseline, and I think several of you kind of said, we already know some of the things that's going on, so it doesn't have to just be a baseline, it can be how we improved even from, from last year, but I think we really have that solid, we know where we are for almost all of them, and now looking to really make gains. Are we more compliant in the OEs? Are we showing positives? You know, are we making reasonable progress towards student results? And I think that's, the board needs to continue to work at that, to do always better, to make sure that we're focusing more intently on student results, and that'll be, I think, big work for this year. Thanks.
So I really appreciated listening to the questions, um, that other board members had tonight on that was on the agenda. So I, I appreciated Dr. Johnson's questions about, um, the labor market review, and, uh, Commissioner Zer, I appreciated your conversation earlier. And so that leads into, uh, as well, my, my comment on what could be improved, and, and that is me. Um, I look forward to contributing more and to following the good examples that by the board for asking insightful questions and thinking about what's best for students and the staff in this district, so that we all, um, see the results that we want to see.
Thanks. Um, yeah, for me, I think, um, you know, the thing that I've been ruminating a lot on, and I think it's a combination of coming out of a year of this first draft of, um, all of our monitoring, you know, like one year later, here we are, it feels like some monumental occasion. We've all, you know, made it through this. Um, minus the results policies we're still looking for, but the, um, I think that, uh, and, and also being in the, in the buildings, I've been making a, you know, really strong effort to do that. And I think that one thing I've, I've settled on, and I've talked about this with numerous, um, administrators and, and even some staff people, is that we are kind of in education there. And I, and I think, you know, through our community's understanding too, is there's ever actually, you don't ever actually reach utopia. There is no, like, perfect place that you get to where everything is, um, because we're, we're a constantly changing and growing, um, society and all, and our, you know, buildings will constantly be, you know, needing to be repaired. And there will always be the things that will keep, you know, needing our attention and our, our concerted efforts. And, um, you know, when I see, um, our love and our dedication for public education coming out even in our facilities report, you know, that we, that we really, you know, value it down to literally the brick and mortar that our kids sit in every day. I think that's really, um, important. And I think that that leads to sort of my, um, my, what I think we need to improve on, because I will die on the sword of communication, I will. Um, but I think we need to be better about how we articulate the bigger overarching goal, uh, for all things that we do, so that we aren't just proud of, you know, my kid's a, an old Abe, or, you know, my kid's a knight, or whatever it might be, but that we're proud, um, that we are ECASD student. Um, and that comes from the articulation and the cohesion of the communication that happens in this room, both down and up. Um, and so whatever our vision is for our buildings, for our kids, for our staff, for our, you know, um, we make, make sure that we're articulating what that vision is, and that we're asking the right questions to make sure that we, uh, in this room are accountable to that vision being, um, executed. So. The end.
Oh, thank you. At this time, I would hear a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or adjourn.